All right, we're good on time. We're gonna let Russell lead the pledge. You had your roll call first.
Yes, Mayor McKay.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schroeder.
Here.
Councilmember Adamson.
Here.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
And Councilmember Jablonsky.
Here.
We have a form there.
Please stand for the pledge. Russell, you lead.
To the flag.
The United States of America.
Intuit Republic.
For which is.
Yes.
One nation.
Your God.
Your God. Invisible.
With liberty. Justice.
For all.
Can't wait till that gets back to normal.
Do what?
Can't wait till that gets back to normal.
Oh, yeah.
All right, Mayor, the first thing we have on the agenda tonight is a proclamation. If you'd like, Russell can read it into the record.
Yep.
Do.
Yes, Mayor, and I just want to also say before I do that, that Weston Commissioner Mary Malina McPhee is on hand to virtually accept the proclamation along with Kamala and Dan, who were instrumental in bringing this item forward and asking us to have this on the agenda tonight. So I wanted to thank them for that. So this is the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, whereas the call for women's rights was proclaimed at the Seneca Falls Convention in 1848, and whereas the demand for women's right to vote became the centerpiece of the women's rights movement since the Seneca Falls Convention. And whereas women's suffragists experienced ridicule, mockery, threats, alienation, imprisonment, and whereas the names of Elizabeth Cady Stanton, Lucretia Mott, Susan B. Anthony, Alice Paul, Lucy Burns, and Carrie Chapman Cat stand out as leading the movement over decades. And whereas the women's role in World War I influenced President Wilson's support for the 19th Amendment granting women the right to vote. And whereas Amendment 19 simply reads, "The right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex." And whereas U.S. House of Representatives passed Amendment 19, 304 to 89, on May 21st, 1919. And whereas the U.S. Senate, passed Amendment 19, 56 to 25, on June 4th, 1919. And whereas Wisconsin was the first state and Tennessee the last one to ratify Amendment 19. And whereas it was a Tennessee mother who urged her son, a congressman, to be a good boy and vote for the Amendment 19, which he did. And whereas Amendment 19 became part of U.S. Constitution on August 18th, 1920, without much fanfare, and ending almost a century of struggles, protests, torture, and prison time. And now therefore, the mayor, town council, to hereby recognize and honor the 100th anniversary of Amendment 19, granting the women the right to vote, and urge every citizen who's eligible to vote to vote in every election. This is proclaimed this 13th day of August, 2020, by Doug McKay, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Absolutely. It's a great privilege and honor, and glad we can do this kind of thing. It's wonderful. Mayor, would you like to say anything?
Yes, I would. First of all, thank you, Mayor and council members. It's always a pleasure being with my Southwest Ranches friends. And it's an honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of AAUW Weston and League of Women Voters Broward. AAUW stands for American Association of University Women, whose mission is advancing equity for women and girls ever since 1881. Our democracy, we, the people, have the power to choose who should govern us. Let us use that power wisely. Jacqueline Kennedy stated, "We should all do something to right the wrongs that we see and not just complain about them." And Susan B. Anthony stated, "Someone struggled for your right to vote. Use it." Those are two empowering statements that I hope you will consider to get out and vote. Please educate yourself about the candidates. The League of Women Voters conducts forums about candidates, and they are available on YouTube. Watch them at your leisure. Please remember that voting is a right and an obligation. Please vote, have a voice, and thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Mary.
It's a pleasure. Thank you.
Kamala, would you like to say something? You have to unmute. Somebody will have to unmute you. Your mic is muted.
She is.
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yeah. Thank you, Mary, and thank you, Mayor and Commissioners for arranging this. I appreciate it very much. You are among the 14 or 15 cities who are reading the proclamation at different dates. And thank you again for doing it. Russell, I appreciate your connecting with us and reminding us and making it possible. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else? No? Okay. Thank you, ladies. Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just before you jump into the public comment, I did want to just address, in case anybody's on the line that is waiting for this, ordinance number nine, which is the second reading of the nursery ordinance, was listed on the agenda because we had advertised it to be on. But if you look at the back of the heading, it says that this item has been withdrawn. So there's no reason for any discussion on that, but it was listed on the agenda as withdrawn because we had advertised. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right. The comment? Do we see any names? Uh-oh.
We have.
Somebody needs to mute their mic.
Yeah, I took care of it. We have two people that have raised their hands. The first person that I see is Steve Bright Cruz. So let me call on him. Mr. Bright Cruz, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Excellent.
Great, thank you. Just a quick comment. I wanted to thank the committee that did the fire study that we discussed last time. They really did an amazing job, and I was proud to chair that committee. You know, I know they, Mayor, you kind of took a pot shot at them at the end of them, like they should have known that the team, that we, the hired professionals, that they were using a different methodology of personnel versus effort. And they had no way of knowing that. And so.
Actually, the pot shot should have been.
That was, is it, excuse me, is this public comment or mayor comment?
Right ahead.
Thank you. And so, so I wanted to thank them. I thought somebody should thank them, and I wanted to thank them for all their hard work. And they're volunteers. They don't get paid like members of the council do. They're volunteering their time. They did it during a time of pandemic and COVID, which was challenging, to say the least. They did a great job. They worked through a number of meetings and talked through a number of issues. And I just, I want to be sure to express to them the thanks that they deserve for doing a great job. Thank you.
Please do.
Thank you. The next speaker, hold on, let me just move on from here. The next speaker is David Kozinski. Mr. Kozinski, can you hear us?
Certainly. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have three minutes here.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Last night, we had another meeting about the development. This Ranches Development. And there was quite a few, there was a large attendance of many residents across the town, from country estates, Green Meadows, Rolling Oaks, and many from Sunshine Ranches. The members of the council who had appeared, Mayor McKay was there, Gary Jablonsky, and Bob Hartman. And we had a lot of speaking moments by the residents. Not one resident made a comment in favor of one acre homesite. Very important that this is what the residents spoke of, the residents who care about where we live and how we live in the town of Southwest Ranches. And I really felt, I want to give a heartfelt thank you to the residents of country estates for their support, the residents of Rolling Oaks for their support, the residents of Green Meadows for their support. It was a great turnout. I want to also bring up that last day for early voting will be Sunday. So if you have not voted, Sunday is the last day for the early voting. And then my other comment has to do with commercial development. And I know it's not on the agenda. It's nothing proposed by that, but I'm going to the past. Several years ago, there have been discussions and disputes about whether or not we should have retail commercial development within our town. And I have been a voice opposing that. And I learned yesterday, listening to the radio, that a retailer named Stein Mart, that everybody knows there's an outlet over on Flamingo Road at.
Well.
Well, Stein Mart is now closing up all their stores because of the reduction, the recession that we're going through right now. And I was listening to a radio show on my way in called Marketplace, where it was reported that because the government is not renewing the $600 a week in the unemployment benefits, that it will result in a 44% drop in consumer spending. This is going to affect commercial establishments, and if we have commercial, if we had commercial development here in the town.
Time's up.
Close, and they would be anything open for them. Thank you. Cut me off tonight. Thank you.
All right, Mayor, the next speaker, hold on a second. The next speaker, the last four numbers of the phone number are 7965. Are you there?
Hello. Am I on?
Yes. Who is this? Can you identify yourself, please?
Yes, George Callis, 6721 Hancock Road, Southwest Ranches, Florida. This is in reference, as most of you know, about the dump next door to me. First and foremost, I want to thank Councilman, Councilmember Hartman and Councilmember Adamson for sympathizing with my cause. I had a conversation with Julio, and according to Julio, per Keith, that there's nothing that can be done with this dump next door to me. And again, you all know that I've been crying about this for a year now. He's got his agricultural exemption, but I don't think that gives him the right to do what he's doing. However, I had a call from a Mrs. Gilbert, and she went on to say that she denied him the ag exemption, and he went on to the value board. And they in turn allowed it with the help of Mary Gay Chapels. I want you all, because I keep hearing that nothing can be done, nothing can be done, but I want to, I want you to picture this. Let's just say that the two nurseries on either side of Town Hall, who obviously have agricultural exemption. Let's just say that they bring in, all of a sudden, they bring in 100 truckloads of manure. They spread chemicals. They spread 1,000 truckloads of mulch. You get the rotting stench. They have no burn. They have, it's a fire hazard. It's a missile hazard. Assuming they're on well and pump, the stink and the residue is going into the ground. And my well is 25, or their well is 25 foot from that property line. Would something be done in that instance? Would the town council find a way to stop it if it were on either side of the Town Hall? I know that hopefully you have some, something to say about it in your remarks at the end of the meeting. Now, we were all warned about a hurricane coming, and everyone was starting to get prepared. But the person next door to me, there was still, there was no preparing there. There were still loose boxes, 55 gallon drums. There were wheelbarrows, plastic pipes, wooden boards, chairs, plants, buckets, tables, hand trucks. All this was just sitting there waiting for the hurricane to come. Nobody prepared over there. And that's, that's, this is the dilemma I'm under. And yet, I keep hearing, nothing can be done, nothing can be done. You know, that's a shame. And you guys ought to put your heads together and find a way to do this. I have no more to say. I just hope you guys start looking into this and stop the nothing can be done thing. Thank you.
Okay. We have one more speaker, Mayor. I believe it's, I'm assuming it's Jim Albritton.
Yes, Russell, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to say, Mr. Mayor and council staff, I want to thank you for allowing me to sit on the comprehensive planning board. I know we work real hard, and I think that all the board members come to a pretty good conclusion together that the things were okay. I know there's been some tweaks to it. I know there's been some different wording that people need to change. But I think overall, in the future, I think we can come to an agreement on that. I'd also like to say thank you to Marty and the rest of the staff for allowing me to sit on the fire assessment board. That was quite a privilege. I met a lot of people and a lot of different ideas that came together, and I think it all worked out real good. So I'd like to say thank you to everybody for allowing me to participate in that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Albritton. Okay. That was the last speaker, Mayor. Mayor, you're muted, sir.
Thanks, sorry.
No problem.
Board reports, I'm guessing. We probably don't have any, but that's inquired.
None. None listed, Mayor.
None listed. Okay. Councilmember comments?
I'll go.
Go ahead, Gary.
Big shock. I know. I got a, and I got a list. So everybody, if you please, please work with me on this one. Just a couple of general purpose announcements. We have coming up, we have hazmat at the barn on the 12th from eight to two, and it has shredding also. And if you have unused paint, batteries, fluorescent light bulbs, electronics, old TVs, whatever, put them in the back of your pickup truck, if you got one, or in your trunk. They make it no contact. You just got to show your driver's license that you're a resident of town, and it's a complete drive-through experience, and it works out really well. We have a photo contest from the Rural Arts Committee for the calendar for next year. It's Farms and Barns. And the entries must be submitted by the 7th of September, excuse me. Also, just a mention, we have a candidate night on the 15th of September via Zoom hosted by Madison Sullivan and her crew, her team, I should say, at 7:00 PM. More details are going to be forthcoming on that as it gets closer to the 15th of September. And if you have any questions that you want to have considered for the candidates, please email her. Her email is swrmaddie@gmail.com. And she'll be happy to include that, and they'll go through the vetting process, because there's going to probably be a lot of commonality in the questions. The other thing I wanted to mention is thanks to the Fire Board for all your time during this really difficult era of trying to get anywhere or do anything with the COVID problem coming on. I just want to mention that. I'm going through my notes here, so I apologize if I'm going to start stuttering here in a minute. One of the things I want to bring up is I was looking at the document that Mr. Callis had sent. I'm assuming the rest of you probably got it too, on the magistrate overruling on the ag position, and I really feel for him. I had Keith look at it and interpret it for me, and basically what it comes down to is, you know, are we going to be ag or are we not going to be ag? We're not going to get to pick and choose what eggs we like, if we like equestrian, or we don't like farming, or we don't like mangoes, or we don't like, you know, whatever. My neighbors are sustainable gardeners. They grow their own food. They empty out all the horse farms around here. I have all that to contend with next door to me. I built a very large hedge over the last couple of years to screen that, but, you know, they have chickens, they have goats, and that's fine. I love the animals. They're half the time in my back pasture. And that's okay, because I don't use it except for my neighbors' horses. So, but we've really, that's probably something we need to talk about or think about in the future. But, you know, the problem is you can't pick and choose your ag, whether it's chickens, eggs, crops. It's a, it's a very generalized term, and if, and the rights that are prescribed with that, you know, are broad-based. And if any of you want to chime in on that when you have your turn, feel free to do so. I just really feel for them because I've gone by there on a weekly, monthly basis, and it's not the prettiest sight to see. I can honestly say that.
It's horrible.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it really is. It's, and, you know, we've got to, you know, are we either ag or we're not ag? When, like I said, we don't get to choose the flavor of ice cream that's in the counter, for lack of a better way of saying it. The other thing I want to mention is just an FYI, the census workers are going to be knocking on doors now. They're going to be easy to spot if you haven't filled out your census form. They're wearing masks. They have proper IDs. So everybody needs to recognize they're not, they are for real. We've gotten the bulletins put out in Broward County that they're going to be door knocking on all the people who didn't fill it out. To avoid that, just go online, and you can register with the Census Bureau, and you will avoid all that. I think I did it the first day I got it. It was painless. Took me less than two or three minutes, and there was nothing to it. And of course, they emailed me back and all this other.
So anybody who hasn't done it, you need to get on and get it done. It's easy.
Yeah, it's like, it's like a one, two, three kind of thing. It's like, if you're, if you're online, or I think you can even do it over the phone. Okay. Thank you, Mayor, for letting me know. I was spitballing on that one.
You did well.
Thank you. The other thing I want to mention too is, you know, we have some of the best police force in the world, I think. And I see it every day. The Davie Police Force is stellar. I hear comments from people wish they had BSO, wish they had this, you know, well, you know, we don't have BSO, we have Davie, and I think their Davie's doing a much better job than BSO did in our town, as you know, under Sheriff Israel at the time. And, you know, we've had their officers dive into dark waters, alligator-infested waters to rescue motorists who were stranded. We've had life support, you know, officers administering life support to people. We've had active shooter scenarios where they've pulled out all the stops and came out with all their equipment. We've had cars go in the water, and they had divers in in less than five minutes, as I understand it. You know, just, just case after case after case that Davie has performed that we, we get the benefit of doing that because they have such a robust platform to administer to police and emergency situations. And I can't, I can't help but be really proud of our Davie police officers. I think they're doing an outstanding job, and I don't know how the rest of you feel about it. But one thing I want to mention, as long as I've got the floor, and this is where I prefaced by saying I've got a list. I've got a longer one here. The traffic detail that we had incorporated, the special speeding traffic detail that we incorporated back in December and January, was scaled back after the COVID problem arose, and I need everybody to like picture this scenario where a police officer pulls over a possible person for speeding or running a stop sign, and they're alone occupant in the car. And generally speaking, if you're like me, you're not wearing a mask at that time. I have it around my neck. But the last thing you think of when you get pulled over by a police officer is, oop, I got to put my mask on. Nobody does that. That's just human nature, unless you're already wearing it. So the police officer now has to walk up to the vehicle, window gets rolled down, and now he's exposed to whatever that person is, so he's going to try to keep his distance. So Davie scaled that back because of the COVID situation, and in those early days, we didn't know if you could be within 50 feet of somebody and get it. So, you know, there was a lot of miss, not misconception, but apprehension, I think is probably the best way to say it. And so that was scaled back, but now we're going to, now we understand it a little bit better, and we're going to be ramping that back up. This is the special detail that's going to monitor 166, 188, Dykes, Volunteer Hancock, Mustang, Luray, et cetera, all over town. They've got, they know where the hotspots are. This is not a guessing game. We know exactly where the problems, problem areas are, and we're going to be moving to that. And so that'll be happening here shortly. Andy's got that situation in hand, and he's working with Davie Police Department for it. But once again, I just want to say that I think the Davie Police Force is doing an outstanding job, and I hope they continue, and I hope they don't ever get tired of us, you know, for that, for that, for that much. Something else I want to mention, this is coming up, and this is coming up with the election that's coming up. And our town is unique in one of the many ways that most people don't know of. And that is about eight years ago, the council, at my behest and with Keith's efforts, really is really what, what did it. Outstanding work by Keith, we instituted a, what's called a snipe sign law. And basically what that means is all the signs that are in a public right-of-way, meaning the garage sales, the lost cat, the lost dog, the balloons that ran out of air two weeks ago, political signs, boat-for-sale signs, can be removed by private citizens if they're in the public right-of-way. Everybody needs to understand that. They can be removed. We advocate calling code to remove the signs, especially political signs. But, so everybody understands that we do have a law that says public, excuse me, private citizens may remove signs in public right-of-ways. So I want everybody to understand that with this election season coming up, that if you see a car pulled over, and they're pulling out at the front of Rolling Oaks or the front of 198th, or, you know, pulled over by Publix, some signs, whether they be Trump signs or whether they be Biden signs, I don't think there's really a preference, because I really don't think code just wants to do their job. And then, by the way, they've got a tough job, and they're doing, I think they're doing a pretty good job under the instances that they're doing right now. They, they will pull it out. The same thing goes with a private individual. They can, they can take them and throw them away. They can confiscate them. It's fair game. So if somebody's putting a sign in a public right-of-way, know that it's probably going to disappear pretty quick. We're allowed to do that in this town now.
Gary, if I could jump in for just a second, Keith. Does that apply to campaign signs? Because I thought they were under a state or federal regulations.
It applies to all signs because of the fact that in Southwest Ranches, if you ask DOT, our swales are designed to be clear zones. So that means that if someone is about to get into an accident, they can swerve off the side of the road and protect themselves and others. And so what happens is, depending on the sign, obviously a small yard sign, it doesn't count. But if they hit an erected sign, it could create tremendous damage, and as a result, we're not supposed to have any signs within our swales. That being said, you know, on private property, no issues. The town does not regulate the political signs on private property. People should post them on their fences, their gates. No issues at all with that in any way. And also, as Councilmember Jablonsky stated, if a sign is picked up, we encourage everyone to bring those signs to Town Hall so that the candidate or the representatives can pick them up later and put them in a proper location, because signs are expensive, and we recognize that and are not looking for people to steal signs, but essentially just put them in a safe location on their property. So that's how it is, Mayor. They're not allowed in our swales because those are clear zones.
Yeah, that I was well aware of. I was just under the impression only code enforcement could pick them up if they're campaign signs. That's all. The Skype signs and all that I knew about. I just didn't realize campaign signs that anyone can pick them up out of the soil.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to distinguish them, especially if they're blocking lines of sight.
Oh, no, no. If they're blocking the line of sight, you know, I clearly get it, but in most cases.
Yeah, but, you know, I'm going to plead devil's advocate for a minute, Mayor, if you allow me. I, you know, line of sight is, you know, for me, is probably different from you, for, different for somebody who's got to wear, you know, a certain kind of glasses, stuff like that. So, but anyway, that's, that's a moot point. The fact that they can be removed, and if code is removing them, please, everybody needs to understand, and I'm making this as a general public announcement. And 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 if code is removing them, please, everybody needs to understand, and I'm making this as a general public announcement. Code enforcement officers that are going around our town and doing their job have stickers on the side of their vehicles, or they're in a town vehicle doing it. So that that's a known thing. We've had instances, as I understand it, where people have picked up signs, which is allowed, and other people have taken pictures of their license plates and then published that on a social media platform. And that's like a really big no-no. That's like a major invasion of privacy, and you never know what nuts are running out there. And, you know, with the nutcases on on some of these social media sites. So, you know, it's it's there for the whole world to see. So you don't really want to do that. I don't encourage people to do that whatsoever.
I'd call code enforcement personally.
Yeah, me too, but there's some people that just don't want to do that, you know, and and can you, if you could picture the front of Rolling Oaks, if it had thirty or forty signs in front of it, you know, it'd be like, you know, at the polling places on polling day, you know, that that sort of thing where it's just a series of them, you know, stacked up. But we came up with that law years ago and and, you know, to to avoid that type of thing, you know, so. You know, I just want to advise everybody on that. And moving on to my last, my last. We have a submittal from one of our residents, Sage Semeta. You might, you may remember him. He was a, he went to school with my kids. He was a little guy who's now a big guy. And he lives in Green Meadows, and he would like to join the Rural Arts Board. And that would give them eight members. But he and he's a very talented individual. He's in web design and very creative. He worked a lot here and when he lived in Rolling Oaks. He did a lot of the roadway cleanup and volunteered for all kinds of stuff. And I think he's, you know, he's a young man, and he's he's got the, he's he's kind of got the best of Southwest Ranches, you know, that we've been able to impair on our next generation. And I'd like to put him on the Rural Arts Board as an at-large member, if that's possible, if you all agree to that.
Do we have any other people in the waiting list on that? Russell, do you happen to know?
That board, I don't do not believe we have anybody else pending. That's the application is pending, but I'm aware of.
So is it consensus, or do we need a motion?
No, no, on on that one, just so that I I and I was unprepared for this. Councilmember Jablonski, did you have another, this is an at-large member that we're adding?
Yeah.
So for at-large, at-large member, we do need a formal motion and a vote. I was just making sure it was at large.
Okay, I'll make a motion to place him on that board.
Second.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else want to say anything? We can just call the question.
He's a great guy, and he's very creative.
Agreed.
You're in charge, Mayor.
Yep, call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
You're muted. How long she's muted?
Still muted.
Still muted, Dee.
Russell, can you press the magic button?
I can only ask her to unmute. She's got to mute it from unmute it from her side. Dee, you got to unmute. There you go.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. I'll conclude my comments and listen to all the other pearls of wisdom like I just, like I just spouted.
Would like to go next.
It's it's really easy. I just ticked off most of the things I was going to talk about, Gary, but but that was a really good, your your comments about the police department are excellent. They're spot on. I I think we have a very professional patrol group out in our area, and I think they do a great job. I I have gotten a lot of phone calls about speeding, particularly from a couple of groups over in Sunshine Ranches. People are apparently getting pretty upset that they're willing to even talk about speed bumps, so I think I talked to Andy about it. I want to try to put something together to to keep rolling on that because sooner or later, they will come back and and, you know, there's probably some places that we're unaware of that if we put somebody, they they probably would at least reduce the speeding problem. I don't know if we'll ever fix it in this town, maybe when we all have electric self-driving cars. I did want to bring some, I know, well, driving?
I have, it's not self-driving, but it'll park itself.
Yeah, okay. I did want to bring something else up. I've gotten a lot of phone calls in the last probably six weeks or so about trash pickup. You know, you've, I've been vocal over the years about, you know, them not conforming and and not not sticking to the schedule, missing a day, missing a week or two sometimes. I mean, and in those situations, when I get phone calls, or it happens in my own neighborhood, I generally talk to Sandy, or I'll put a I'll I'll go out to the website and put something out there, and it it generally gets fixed pretty quickly. I'm not sure if people are aware, but, you know, in in that industry right now, I haven't heard any news, so I'm going to assume it's the same. They're they're being hit very, very hard with COVID. And unfortunately, we are paying the price because the way that industry works is, you know, they'll have three guys, two or three guys on a truck. Well, if a truck driver comes up sick and can't come back to work for two weeks plus, they'll pull somebody off the back. Chances are that person who's come off the back, who's normally, you know, dumping the cans, doesn't know the route, so it might take him fifty percent longer to get the job done. There's no simple answer to it. They're down from a manning perspective pretty significantly, and they're doing the best they can. I used to tell people when I'd get complaints, hey, call the the guy who is responsible for customer service, that he's a VP or something along those lines. In the past, he's always returned phone calls, if not the same day, absolutely next day. I'm I'm getting reports from people that they're not picking up the phone. Now, you know, I I got to believe that they're they're being crippled by the virus right now, and Andy given me some feedback back probably a month ago that that's what's been going on, and it it's it's one of those things that, just like there's a ton of law enforcement out right now with COVID, it's the same with the garbage men and a lot of different public services. So, you know, I I've read a lot where people are really upset about it, but I I hate to say it could be a lot worse. I mean, I lived through a garbage strike in New York where they didn't pick up for a month. That was pretty bad because it just sat in the street. I mean, in this scenario, they're they're getting to us. They're just, it might be a day or so after the normal pickup, so I'm just asking people to have a little bit of patience. Other than that, that's what I had, other than what Gary said. Gary, great job. Thanks.
Okay. Dee, Delta.
Yes, may I say something? Totally personal, but I would like people to know a little bit about me because I've been getting phone calls and some real interesting misinformation is out there. And I thought, well, I'll just read about me right now to anybody listening, or maybe on the video eventually. But I just want to let people know, my husband and I built our house in the mid seventies in Green Meadows. We raised our sons Paige Allen Amundson and Matthew Winslow Amundson. I was a flight attendant with National and Pan Am for twenty-four years. And during my time as a flight attendant, I served as grievance chair for three years and president of the Flight Attendant Union for seven years. And I negotiated two National Airlines flight attendant contracts. I began a career thirty-four years ago in real estate, still do that full-time today. I worked part-time on our, at our Publix for twelve years on Volunteer Road, and I know a lot of people from that. My husband Les, with neighbors, started our Green Meadows Civic Association. He was an original volunteer firefighter when our truck was at Bill Lewis's house off of Hancock Road, and Charlie Tona was the chief. We were involved with a push to become our town and spent hours fighting Broward County Commissioners. I was even told by one of the Commissioners that I, we, were selfish to want to become our own town. Well, guess what? We won, Broward County lost. I'm a hard-working resident of this town. My husband and I are both self-employed. We had three sons. We lost our first son, Michael, in a drowning accident when he was thirty-three months old. My other two sons are firefighter, paramedics. Paige for Orange County, Florida, and Matt, who is currently right now a lieutenant with Southwest Ranches Fire Rescue. When we lost Freddie Fiskelli and the rest of the term was needed to be filled, I, along with twelve other people, applied to fill the seat. I came before the city council, town council, and by overwhelming majority of the council, I was appointed to serve out the term. I've decided to run as a council member for District thirteen. And I'm not agenda-driven. My only agenda is the love for this town and the others who fought so hard to become this town. We fought against all odds to become the town of Southwest Ranches, and I want to protect not only our town's needs, but the needs of my neighbors and the needs of my town's taxpayers. I'm not asking for money. I will not ask you for money. I am asking for your vote this November. And so in order to protect our way of life, I just would like to ask that you vote for me to remain in this seat that I currently hold for District Council Number Three. And if anyone has any questions, my phone number is out there. I'm happy to answer you. Please, I beg of you, don't believe what you read on these crazy social media things. Call me. I'll answer anything I can. And I thank you very much for your support in November. And that's just about it.
All right. Dee?
Me.
There you go.
Okay. Um, just a couple of quick things. I really do, and I know you all do too, no matter what our differences, I really miss all of us sitting together. I think it's better when you can see somebody eye to eye. I would like to touch on Mr. Kalas for just a second. I do have a lot of empathy toward him. But you cannot pick and choose, unfortunately. And I wish his neighbor would be a better neighbor to Mr. Kalas. Mr. Kalas has been a wonderful resident. I've known him for quite a while, and I have a lot of respect for him. And if there's a way to fix the problem that's going on, I, you know, I would be the first one to jump in and say, then let's fix it. Also, I'd like to say, when people call in, you know, I hope you remember that this isn't always the easiest job. And we all deserve the respect of not getting frustrated with us. It's frustrating when things don't go our way. I I get that, but you just have to stay calm and try to remember that you you voted for all of us. You put us in here. It's a tough job, and, you know, we're trying our best. I took and listened to what went on with the meeting with the Toll Brothers. And I have a lot of residents that are calling me, and I've actually made my own list. And I'm calling residents to get opinions on that. This has not been brought before me, so I don't feel like I can really discuss it. But I do want everybody to know that I am calling people and trying to get opinions on it. As far as the speeding in the town, I'd like to address some of that. This speeding doesn't just go on in Sunshine Ranches. It goes on all over the town. Go down 188. It's horrible, and there are speed bumps. It's absolutely appalling. To put speed bumps, and I can honestly say right now, I have at one time had a trailer and I had to haul horses. And going over speed bumps is absolutely terrible when you have to go over those. It's not good. It's not good for the animals. It's not good for the trailer. It's not good for the vehicle. When this pandemic, the COVID calms down, I just think we ought to increase our police. We have great police out here. They do a wonderful job. Gary's right. They're some of the best they are. They give it their all. Speed bumps isn't always the answer, and like I said, anybody that's pulled a trailer and had to drive over these things, it's terrible. I just want to tell everybody to stay safe. And I'm looking forward to an actual meeting with everybody.
Amen.
All right. I guess I'm up. One of the things I'd like to say is that I was really disappointed with the what transpired with the fire study. You know, that could cause a tax increase, without a doubt. I'm working diligently with the administration of staff to make sure that that doesn't happen. So I want everybody to realize that, you know, some of that was a surprise to everybody and that we're going to beat the bushes and fight what we can and to do what we can to keep the taxes down. I think that's my A number one responsibility and goal is to keep the taxes down in this town. So, you know, if I'm guilty of something, I would say that's what it is. Other than that, I do not have any agenda. So I'm here to serve the residents and serve the people of this town and protect their rights. So I'll leave that be, and we'll move on. Thank you. All right, let's see. Legal, you're up.
Sure, Mayor. I'll I'll be super quick. Just to give everyone a heads up, at the next meeting, the CC Homes application will be coming forward. That is a quasi judicial item dealing with the old Sesa property. Just giving everyone a heads up on it because the notices went out on that, and residents are likely to get notices soon. It is quasi judicial, which means that council members cannot take a position on the matter. Instead, you need to act as judges when the item comes before you and make a determination based upon competent substantial evidence and what's in the code. But because residents will be getting notice of it this week and next, I just wanted to give everyone a heads up that it's on the next agenda. Other than that, Mayor, no further legal comments.
Thank you, Keith. Appreciate it. Stay safe. Andy, Mr. Burr, Administrator.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Got a few things. First, I'm going to start off with a commercial, and I want to thank you and Councilwoman Jablonski for for speaking to the Census. We do want to ask people to complete their United States Census today, that it only takes a couple of minutes to do it. And it's important because the Census data will be used over the next ten years to make decisions about federal and state funding for local programs that our residents need. An undercut can have devastating consequences on our community, especially in important areas like social services, transportation, hospitals, nursing homes, education, and emergency preparedness. In addition, Census data determines congressional and state legislative representation. The Census touches every life every day. So our community is counting on all of us to complete the Census data today, so I ask you all to do that. Moving on from that, a reminder that next Tuesday night, we have our budget workshop. Mayor heard your comments before. Marty and I heard the comments of the council at the last meeting. And so we've taken that direction. We've we've been hard at work on that. And so we we hope to have some, certainly some progress to share with you next Tuesday night at the Budget Workshop. A reminder that Dykes Road southbound will be closed next Thursday, August twentieth, starting at, I believe, eight o'clock in the morning until that construction is done. They're replacing the mast arms there. We expect that to be closed probably all, if not a good part of the day. So there is a message board that's up, so we've got that communication out there in the neighborhood. But just a reminder while we're while we're talking now, that that is coming up next Thursday. Next Tuesday, prior to the Budget Workshop, which will be done virtual, is primary election day. Council chambers will be open for that. Concerned about that, but we're going to restrict the poll workers to council chambers, and we have plans to to scrub that area overnight. We're going to keep staff at a at a low level in the building on Tuesday. But we will be open for that for that election next Tuesday, so it's a normal voting place. For for those who haven't voted earlier, voted by mail, want to not cast their vote, that they're want to not cast their vote, that their ballot, uh, next Tuesday, they'll be able to do that in council chambers.
That's the eighteenth, the eighteenth, right?
Correct, correct, the eighteenth, yes. Uh, and and Keith, thank you for bringing up the CC Homes project, which is the quasi judicial for next, for next meeting. Uh, I've spoken with you all privately to let you know that that was coming. Uh, just a reminder that it's out there and and obviously, I know the public can have a lot of questions on that. And uh, you know, we'll certainly go through that process at at the next meeting because it's quasi judicial, I don't want to say too much. And and just in closing, I'll give you a a COVID count update in southwest ranches. Uh, two weeks ago at our last meeting, we were at a hundred and thirty-two cases documented in southwest ranches. Our current number today is a hundred and sixty-six. So I'll just try to keep you posted as we as we move forward. And uh, you know, we're certainly looking forward to that number to cease from climbing, and hopefully that'll be soon. And I think that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andy.
Can I just make a request, Andy? The um, the documentation for the CC Homes agreement, can you get that out to us sooner rather than later? I'm assuming it's going to be a pretty thick document.
Uh, we'll, uh, as soon as I get that package put together, which obviously would be for your next agenda, but we'll, in advance, we'll get that item out to to hold here.
Thank you.
Certainly.
All right, thank you. Russell, Resolution Ten.
Mayor, the resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, transferring the town's planning, zoning, and land use services to SEPI Engineering and Construction as a result of its acquisition of Melgren Planning Group, Inc., extending the agreement for an additional three-year term, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into a new agreement, SEPI Engineering and Construction, providing for an effective.
Mayor, if I may just chime in real quick on this.
Go right ahead.
Sure, uh, just by way of background, normally when a vendor has a name change, it doesn't normally come back before the council. It happens, you know, quite often. But in this case, um, the uh, contract with Melgren Planning Group was expiring, and when they got acquired by this new company, uh, we needed to extend it for a new term anyway because our planning services contract expired. So while bringing it back before you for the extension of the three-year term, uh, we did it at this time to acknowledge the name change because they were acquired and to give an additional three years under the contract. The players stay the same, uh, there's no difference in services to the town, no cost differences. It's just they were acquired by a bigger company, and as a result, um, the name has changed of their company. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Keith. Okay. Uh, any comments? I need a motion in a second.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second, Russell.
Okay, thank.
I did have a question or two for Keith.
Go ahead.
Number one, this is within our procurement period to allow to extend because I heard the contract had expired.
Uh, it it hasn't, uh, I think it expires in like a month, Russell. You you probably have that, I don't have that on me right here. But uh, yes, it's within our scope of the contract to extend.
Okay, good, good. And then the second one is, uh, there's no material changes to this, uh, this, other than the name of the the new company?
That's correct. They accepted all of our fees that we charged the residents as delineated in your resolution that sets the fees. They agreed to it, they understand that it's lower than they normally get, uh, but they've accepted that as part of the contract.
Okay, yeah, I didn't have anything to compare this to, so I figured I'd go to the source. Thank you.
All right, anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I just want to say, thank you, Bob, you asked all the questions. My turn to say thank you. You asked all the questions that were in my mind.
All right, anybody raise their hand out there?
Yes, Mayor, one, Steve Bright Cruz did, uh, but just to answer Keith's question very quickly, the original agreement was set to expire September thirtieth.
Okay.
Thank you, Russell.
All right, go ahead.
Two, uh, two, two people raising their hands. The first is Steve Bright Cruz. Uh, let's see, Mr. Bright Cruz, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, you have two minutes, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Just a quick comment, I just wanted to thank everything that we've, we as a town, we've seen it go from Michelle Melgren and Associates to the Melgren Planning Group, now to this new group. Um, it's been great to watch them grow and see the success they've had as we've been successful as well. They've been great partners. I think Jeff knows uh, what's going on in this town as far as uh, all the different planning issues and and what the residents like to see and what the residents will find unacceptable. Just been a great partner all the way along. I certainly hope that uh, as they go into this new phase and are bought out by this larger company, that they still have the flexibility to do what they've done in the past and still have the ability to work with the residents like they've done in the past. They've been great partners, I certainly wish them the very best. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bright Cruz. We do have one other speaker.
Go ahead.
Before you do that, Russell, Mayor, I just want to point out to you, Jeff Cadens is on the call. So he's certainly aware of it, here for any questions that you may have and is listening to your comments.
Yeah, I don't think we have any, but go ahead, Russell.
Okay, David Kozinski is the next speaker. Mr. Kozinski, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, you have two minutes.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I just want to um, uh, just say that this is a great deal. Um, having Jeff Cadens, um, for handling the planning role is definitely an asset to the town. Uh, with my interactions with Mr. Cadens, I I have found him to be incredibly knowledgeable. He's definitely an asset for the town, so um, this is a great deal. That's enough.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Uh, no, that's uh, that's all the speakers, Mayor.
All right. Go ahead and call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
It's a pleasure, yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Uh, approval of minutes.
Take a motion.
July ninth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Okay, any comments or corrections? Because we've had them corrected before.
Good to go.
There's no one raising their hands, Mayor.
All right, great, all right.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion in a second.
You, you have.
You have that.
You have it?
The question, yes.
Go ahead, call the question.
Uh, Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Now you're on, Gary.
Motion to adjourn.
No, you're on.
I'll take it, thank you. Everybody stay safe. Nice seeing everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Have fun in Colorado.
Bye.
Thanks, good night.